Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 3 meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Mrs. Bydlman is coming up to do our prayer.
Lord, we cannot thank you enough for your passionate love for us. We ask you to continue to guide the Commissioners and their staff as they decide what is good and what is best for Lorraine County. And with your leading, Lord, we know that we will succeed in all our plans for the present and for the future. And we thank you for such a great team that has a concern in the heart for our county. In Jesus's name, amen.
Commissioner Calo is a spunky dog from the kennel today.
There you go. She's beautiful, Wellington Police Department founder. She's twenty, a year and a year and a half, she's a brindle mix. She's extremely friendly. She's housebroken, unlike Matt's dog. Yeah. And she's available for adoption this Saturday. How many dogs do we have right now, Tim? We have thirty-one dogs, so please stop by. If she isn't quite the right fit, I'm sure we have something that your family's needs and wants.
We can take them all home, right?
Well, most of them, I think those little ones.
Yeah. I'll take them.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a summary sheet because it was being prepared. I do recall that there's some potential hires at Job and Family Services, Children and Family First, and Golden Acres. So I wish to discuss those with you. I also wish to discuss ongoing litigation and pending litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board may we go into executive session to discuss those issues that I've explained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approving way of the reading of the minutes of May 27?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not to exceed 2,240,000 Series 2015 Capital Improvement Plan improvements bond anticipation notes. This is for the purpose of paying cost of construction, constructing and acquiring improvements to various county-owned properties, including HVAC improvements, roof repair and replacement, sidewalks, parking lots, storm sewers, landscape, security and other site and building improvements together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Unfortunately, these are the things that we used to be able to pay cash for, but because of our budget crunch, we're doing these in notes.
Well, you know, I think we should take an opportunity to really have that discussion because we're doing a lot of capital improvements, so people think we're flush with funds to be able to do those things. As we discussed beginning about two years ago, we found ourselves in a position where we're leveraging the future to pay for capital needs today. Of all my years with the county, we always were able to pay for our capital improvement and capital needs with current carryover and cash flow. And we have not been able to do that, and we deferred for several years some important maintenance, to the point where if we didn't perform that maintenance, then we would start becoming in a very dangerous situation for damage. We're also not only doing capital maintenance, but we're also been buying vehicles under these funds too. To date, I think we purchased about ten or twelve vehicles for the safety forces and maybe more, I don't have a count in front of me. Not to mention that there's a lot more work that needs to be done. And we, you know, we started with thinking we would do two million. We're recapitalizing, you're looking at more than the two million there, and you're probably going to be looking at closer to three when we're done. And that's got to be paid for sometime in the future by revenue that hopefully will support that. I don't like being in that position with regards to our capital needs.
Is there a light at the end of the tunnel? I saw that starting on Monday, they were going to start adding sales tax to online purchases through Amazon and other means, so is that going to, that's going to help our general fund, hopefully?
I'm not sure of how that's working with the state. It's pretty hard to localize that back down to where it was locally. It's easier on a statewide level. I know, for instance, when I was in California, I was in Napa, they charged us sales tax when we bought, we purchased wine there and had it shipped back. They charge us Ohio sales tax.
That doesn't get back to us?
I don't think so, Commissioner. I don't know enough about it, but I don't believe so. Lisa's here and she's indicating not, so that may not give us any relief at all at the local level.
You know, once money arrives in Columbus, they do a good job of making sure it doesn't come back.
Well, even when, even when money arrives here, they make sure they take it from us.
I know.
So the challenge going forward is, you know, sales tax has been, is back to, you know, taking a slight tick up as it used to post recession, but it's not a significant enough revenue source.
Not to make up for the loss of interest income, the tune of seven million dollars?
Local government, local government millions of dollars, an overestimate of what the gambling revenue would be, a significant overestimate. The state changing its mind on recino gambling vices, the casinos that were put into place by a vote of the taxpayers. The recino gambling was put into place by an act of legislation.
Right.
Okay, so they diluted the voice of the people of Ohio and what their concerns and needs were by legislation, which shouldn't have occurred. So we lost funding there. We have not, we've gotten close on that. We lost local government and we're down seven million dollars on interest income. And I do not see the bond markets significantly improving over the next few years. I think they'll start going up, but our portfolio has to follow that. So if the market goes up in the next two or three years, we're still going to be behind the yield curve trying to catch it because we're in investment vehicles that are very restrictive by statute that we would have to exit and then try to get into higher-producing revenue vehicles. So tomorrow, if it was to go up X percent, we're still going to not see any benefit of that. So we're several years away from any relief in our interest income on the monies available throughout the county.
Even if you take the last eight years from '07 to '15, eight years at seven million dollars a year difference, that's fifty-six million dollars.
It's huge, it's bigger, and as you know, it's bigger than fifty-six million dollars over those years. So we're going to continue to see a lot of pressure. I anticipate when we go to permanent bonding on some of these projects, having a problem with the rating agencies. Now, as you know, I've been able to really sidestep a lot of that, and I've been working with them for a number of years, there's a lot of familiarity with all of us, but the numbers are not going to be able to solve our problem. They're going to, they're going to see that. And we'll have to deal with paying more to borrow money for things that we used to not have to borrow money for.
When I ran for this office, I knew the financial picture was not a very bright one. I just didn't realize how dark it was. You know, we have some serious future financial problems facing this county, you know, trying to take care of capital needs. The list never goes away, the roofs that need to be fixed and the buildings that need to be upgraded, and this is your property. I mean, this is what we're responsible for taking care of.
Yes, sir.
It's almost like looking back at you and saying, "Don't put that roof on your house or don't put the new windows in the home." You know, we have to do those things. But now when it gets to the point where we even have to borrow so that we can keep the road patrols out there in the county, making things safe for folks in the townships, that's when it becomes a real big problem. It's had a major impact on our bond rating, and it's, you know, we just can't continue to go down this road. When you brought up the recinos, I know because I offered several amendments saying that the recinos should have to, you know, put back into the local government funds, much like the regular casinos do, and a lot of folks don't realize that. When you go to these recinos, a percentage of that money is not coming back to the local governments like it does with the normal casinos.
Unfortunately, the, I don't know if it was the governor or the legislative body that was controlled by the governor, reneged on their promise. My understanding was that the promise was made not to have the recino gambling, and shortly after the voters approved, the casinos, they, it was within a year, wasn't it, that they?
Yes, when they instituted the recino language, allowing those dollars to go to the video lottery and compete with the brick and mortar casinos, so they could fill the schools' dollars and then lower the general fund appropriation to schools.
Not only that, let's not forget that over the last ten years, maybe eleven, that the state has added three-quarters of percent sales tax without a vote of the taxpayers.
That's true.
Okay? And that's three-quarters percent more leaving Lorraine County.
Well, you did roll back a quarter percent one time, remember?
They rolled back, well, they actually, they put on a, they raised it a whole percent. They rolled, they were going to, for two years, and they were going to roll it back after two years, but they only rolled back half.
I thought it was a half to a quarter.
Okay, no, it was, it was a whole to a half.
Okay.
And then just recently, they put on another quarter. We only have three-quarters of percent that we've been surviving on in Lorraine County for decades, and a quarter percent of that's dedicated to jail operations, so we have a half a percent. Meanwhile, while we're somewhat starving on that half percent, the state has managed to take three-quarters of percent more out of Lorraine County while returning less.
And cut their local government funds.
Yes, while returning less. However, the return, whether it's local government or other funds, while returning less to Lorraine County, they've been able to take more out. And, you know, the taxpayers, they're beginning hard hitting. They don't see who gets what, they only see at the end of the day what they're paying.
Right.
And I don't blame them, to be honest with you. So, you know, that three-quarter percent, a piece of that would have been real nice for us to be able to get over some of these problem areas. I only point that out because people forget all those things that have happened.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Authorizations of not to exceed 2,525,000 sanitary sewer improvements for Redfern project, bond anticipation notes for purpose of paying the cost of constructing, acquiring sanitary sewer system improvements, including sewer line, force main, lift station and other improvements together with all necessary appetances thereto and to provide additional project funds.
So moved.
Second.
Can we talk about this a little bit?
Sure, go ahead.
Just, just so people know what this is, this has been a work in progress now for about another year and a half, trying to nail it down. Columbia Township, up on Redfern, it's going to be a nice sewer project, full build-out, I think there's going to be two or three hundred homes up there. We're working with the developer, this will be fully assessed to the developer's property, and then when the subplot, sub-plating is done, each plot, each lot will have an assessment made to it, but initially it goes on all of the property. The developer is responsible for at-risk for forty percent, if he doesn't build, we have the other sixty percent. At the end of the day, though, it's not costing us anything as long as the development goes forward. We have done this kind of arrangement with this developer before over there off the Marks Road Sewer. The residents along the way that are going to be affected by the sewer are getting free sewers. That was part of the arrangement, that we don't have residents and homeowners suffer costs so somebody else can make a profit downstream. So there's, the affected homes are, will receive free sewer.
Do you know about how many properties are involved along the way?
Do you remember how many it was this time? Nineteen, twenty, twenty-three?
Twenty?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine. That will receive.
They'll just have to pay a tap-in, but they won't have an assessment for the actual sewer line.
They only have to pay the Marks Road tap-in fee, not the Redfern. So that's waived on the Redfern. Marks Road's something else, and we, but also, we're extending the line a bit at our cost to bring it down to the Redfern Farm subdivision, there's seventy-three, seventy-two homes back there with dry sewers, where we're now exploring the dry sewers to see what condition they're in eventually. And you saw the emails I sent out to the groups that had some concerns with regard to when that may happen. I don't know when that may happen, it's down the road a significant amount of time. However, we were able to negotiate in the agreement that those residents do not have to pay the tap fee on Redfern either. So a lot of people like to refer to it as a developer's tap fee. So that's waived, and we were also able to negotiate only a half fee on the Marks Road sewer tap fee. So that's all in place for those people eventually when we want to hook in Redfern Farm subdivision, which will eventually, will, it'll have to happen, but it's, that's down the road. It's a good project, and it's going to, it's going to open up whole areas of Columbia Township for development. There are lots going on out there in Columbia Township. Council and I have met several times with other developers out there, looking at other sewers out there, and we're working closely with Columbia Township on land use, land management, sewer planning and other issues, because the progress is going to be, it's going to be swift out there, and they need to be prepared. So I'm very happy working with them out there, it's a good project.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Children and Family, amend Resolution 14-273, adopted November 19, 2014, approving contract with Neighborhood Alliance effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, for an increase of, from 429,780 to 435,884.52.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Men Resolution 15-218, adopted April 8, 2015, approving contract with Ohio Guidestone Nutrient Fathers Program effective April 1, 2015 through June 30, 2015, for an increase from 2,144 to 4,288.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to J.A. Kilby Enterprises, North Ridgeville, in the amount of $8,580, which includes a 10% contingency for any unforeseen change orders for Sadie Markovic at 360 Mylan Avenue and Hurst to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 14 home repair activity for a roof replacement. Eighteen bids were requested, two bids received, this being the most responsive compliance specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Approve an enter and MOU with City of Illyria for NSP III funds in the amount of $16,241.40 to demo 320 11th Street, Illyria.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Approve an enter and contract with Coldwater Consulting, LLC, in the amount of $127,000 for three years of consultant services, including but not limited to, to the implementation of a third Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just for clarification, this is the one Commissioner Lundey had some concerns over, and we went back and renegotiated the consulting fees on this, and we were able to achieve a significant reduction in the overall cost of the administration of this grant with them. They sharpened their pencil pretty good on this one. So I'm comfortable that there's not a lot left to squeeze out of the chamois for the work that we want, but I, I know there were some concerns, so we just had to do a better job on this. And I want to commend Don because he actually did it, and he did a good job.
Thanks, Don.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreement with various transportation companies to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for state fiscal year 16, effective July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. Three bids were received, authorize director to execute amendment for changes in programming content, increase with prosecutors proposed to form, one, provide a ride to Cleveland in amount not to exceed 400,000, and two, life care wheelchair services, Illyria in the amount not to exceed 950,000.
Mr. Cortez? How are we not able to collaborate with Job and Family in order to get some matching dollars on these contracts?
Fantastic question.
Same one I raised.
Same question that your two, your two peers have posed. Well, I had an extensive dialogue with Mary Lugolski on this, and she had, she already knew it was going to be a sensitive issue, so she was already sending me emails before that dialogue even began. Under the federal procurement, this, you're not able to negotiate this. One of the defects in our proposal was that if they weren't awarded the whole contract, which they've never awarded the whole contract to one vendor, our proposal from, that we assisted First Transit with, indicated they would, they would have to negotiate the price. And that's not permissible under federal law. And, and so that became a fatal defect, and, because they were not going to award the contract to just one vendor, that's why people submit an overarching proposal, then they submit pieces of the proposal. It was new, it was the first time they tried to do this, I commend them for the effort. And to be honest with you, I don't believe we have enough rolling stock to handle all of the, all of it to begin with. I know you guys worked hard on it, but, but that defect alone proved problematic. Now, there is, there is some potential here, and the potential would be these contracts, they're water-free, but they have renewables in them, and Commissioner Lundey and I had quite an extensive conversation, and my recommendation's going to be, I already told this to Mary Lou, that I would request that the renewables come out, it's a one-year contract. And, and next year, we rebid this, and we give it a second try at a public-to-public cooperative that will significantly improve this community if we can, if we can pull it together. Let's look at this as lessons learned, we need to, we need to, we need to go look at it and do a better job of understanding the requirements, and there may be some work through Transit on this. Right now, there's nothing else I can do with that. The, but I will caution that, that this is a really hard-to-serv community, it's a, it's a very sensitive issue with some of the people being transported, and I don't believe that understanding some of the people that, that life care, excuse me, is transporting, that we should be transporting. So I need to, I need to actually make sure that I give guidance to this proposal next time, because there's just, there's some cases, there's some medical cases, that it's not simply somebody in a wheelchair.
Right.
So we can't get the whole contract, which we're not capable of making that transport.
Life care's a good local employer.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a local company, and they do a nice job.
We, First Transit's here, I don't know if you want to add anything, and Pam's here from LCT, is there anything that I've said that concerns you? Oh, I just, Phil.
You think we have enough rolling stock?
Okay. All right. One of the concerns that came out of the, would you want to come on up? Otherwise, I'm going to get yelled at.
Yep, Hal will be.
Yeah, Hal saw it pounding on the wall back here.
Hit you with a stick from back there.
I will tell you that, the reviewer was from outside of Job and Family Services to make sure that we had an unbiased look, since there was some inner government bidding going on, and the reviewer really didn't think we had enough rolling stock to complete the whole contract. We, they believed that we had enough to complete part of the contract, but not the whole contract, and there was some concern with, with some of the medical conditions of people that need to be transported that may require specialized services that we just didn't have. You can comment on that now, I just wanted.
So, go ahead.
We figured based on the approximate number of trips that were to be made, that we estimate four to five vehicles to be used. Currently, we would have at least seven, you know, at the max, to provide the service. But with more specialized service than just someone getting on in a wheelchair or, or someone having a walker or something like that, if they do need more medical attention, no, we would not be able to do that part.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I would have been more pleased if we had gotten part of it, but I'm not completely displeased because we're learning, and this is the first time we actually have tried to do this. And I also need to remind the Commissioners that we have to be very, very careful of the FTA regulations with regard to how we conduct ourselves in this also. They're fairly restrictive, and, and so we're always on that ragged edge of being on the wrong side of the equation, so even, even if we were getting this, we would have to open it up to, you know, general public.
Right.
As well as service this, this contract. Private entities don't have to deal with that, that eventuality, we do.
I think the public perception is that we can just say, hey, we have to provide the transit, that's all there is to it, which is not the case. You know, there are federal guidelines around this that have very well-defined requirements. You know, when I saw that we weren't successful in this competitive situation, I would just ask that in the future, and that we start to ramp up now, that we start to have those discussions, we start to do our research, we do our homework, we make the case to them that we do have the fleet that's needed to get things done, so that we can put together a competitive bid. It would be my request, and I think, you know, all of us hopefully would be in agreement on this, that I think there's a renewal clause that's in this contractor agreement, that I don't want to get into an automatic rollover renewal. I think if we can have it be a situation where we can get our ducks in order and have a chance to compete again in a year, that, that would be the preference.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, if I might add something, there are also some problems coming from the other direction with Jobs and Family Services, and Kristin and I spoke just this morning. We had looked at it, that the county, there are restrictions with their personnel dealing with county people who are, in effect, their employers, so there are some issues on their end with bidding out of the contract and awarding it to the county that we need to work our way through too. And Kristin and I spoke this morning, we're going to be looking at those issues, so, I mean, actually, had the county got this, we were going to have to look at this more closely, because they actually had to, I suggested they bring independent people and to evaluate the.
But other counties must do this.
Well, we just got to look at it, it came up kind of late.
It's not new. There may be issues and there may not be, it's something that needs to be researched. It's something that needs to be looked at. But I actually came up to speak to the renewal clause. The renewal clause is not an automatic clause. Obviously, it was in the RFB stating that there is an option to renew. Therefore, I can't really take it out, but I don't have to renew. That is a complete option.
You don't have to take it out, but we can.
Right. Absolutely.
This is, this is the deciding body on any contract, and they can do a full modification of that contract right here.
Absolutely.
So I.
I just wanted to bring that to the table on my end, that's all.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Mary Lou indicated to me that's why they brought in Peggy.
Right.
Who we have a very high regard for, we've known Peggy for a very, very long period of time, I, I trust her work explicitly, and let's start working through those issues now. And Mary Lou also did say that she would provide help and guidance in, you know, if we didn't understand how to make our proposal, so that we didn't run afoul of any of the federal regulations. of any of the federal regulations. Can't help us with the numbers or anything else, but they can tell us that you can't do this, you can't do this.
I can help you with generalities to anything. There are, you know, there are certain standardized things that are in any, any bid, so, absolutely.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moved?
Second.
Anything further, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Enter into agreement with J.C. Penney's Elyria to participate in school clothing and school voucher program for low-income children amount not to exceed $700,000, effective July 19th through August 13th, 2015, and the eligible children are three for, to 18, not 19. Receiving OWF will receive $300 per child, authorized director to execute amend for changes in programming content, increase with prosecutors per vostro form.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Language Line Services to provide demand telephone language interpreter services for limited English-speaking persons at a cost of $1.25 per minute, effective July 1st, 2015 through June 30, 2016, and authorized director to execute prosecutors per vostro form.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Enter into plan for expenditure funds allocated by Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for state fiscal year 15. County has received $312,721 from 60533 account and may be spent for any legitimate family services purposes outli, allowed under state and federal law.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Workforce Development, submit request to Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for Lorain County to continue operating as a standalone workforce development area under Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Mr. Cortez, do you want to comment on this?
Oh, I guess.
Yeah.
The, the, we had to have our plan in place last week. I indicated in, in the submission on behalf of the County Board of Commissioners that they wish to stand alone. I'm not sure we're going to be successful at that. We, we were afoul of one of the criteria for being able to continue as a designated area. However, this whole process is not, has not unfolded as the state envisioned it would unfold. The biggest thing is that Area 7, which is a massive area, did not disband. I think the state was completely comfortable that there was going to be some exodus from that huge area that was cobbled together many years ago, and it really makes no sense. The problems that are facing Erie County are completely different than, say, Morrow County or Harrison County down in Appalachia. But that didn't occur, and strangely, I thought it was going to occur too, because we were talking to Erie and Rock County and Ottawa about a potential collaboration that made some sense, with Lorain County has always been an independent area ourselves. Commissioner Kayla, you were involved in that, and I think a couple of the other commissioners made phone calls, but we could not find a bride, or a groom, as it may be, that, that, that wanted to come out of Area 7 and work with us. That left us looking towards Medina, made some sense, but Medina stayed where they were, and they expanded into Medina, Portage, Stark, Summit. And they really weren't interested in adding Lorain County in that area, because they were, they were congesting around Canton, Akron.
Correct.
Okay. We, we, we looked to the east, and after we backed out of the big shadow that Cuyahoga cast, we thought, whoa, wait a minute.
Well, I had a discussion with them.
We did, we did.
And they decided they would send a letter between Executive Buddhist and Mayor Jackson, they would, they, coming as a standalone, but they would look at expanding. I had discussions with Lake County, which would have gone well, but we're not contiguous to rules that allow.
Yeah, we're still...
Director did leave me a voicemail last week, if I want to give a call, but they're going standalone. I'd already told Commissioner Troy we were doing the same thing, so...
You know, Lake County's found themselves in the unenormous position that we did. They've been an independent area. They also failed the one criteria we failed. Let me say this, because some people tune in and don't tune in, they hear us talking here. That criteria is no longer measurable under the new act. They did away with it, because it's, it's not a really good measurement that they were using, so under WEOLA, they, they have, they have, they've taken it out, but they're still gauging success under that old criteria. Lake County had the same problem. It made a lot of sense for us to be able to join with Lake County. I, I was, I was excited about that potential collaboration. Not only do we have collaborative efforts with them over the years, and we're very familiar with, with lots of their public people and political people, but our, our community college has lots of collaborations with their community college.
Correct.
So it, it, we, we have a lot of knowledge of each other, and I think we could have worked well together, but there's still an argument about whether you have to be contiguous or not.
Well, that's the discussion. All the webinars we went through and questioning and stuff, do we have to be contiguous or not?
I still have not been able to get 100% certainty on this, because people have been waffling around the answer. And of course, the WEOLA Act, you know, is nine feet tall of paper, trying to sort through that. So right now, on your behalf, I submitted all the reasons why we should remain an independent area, why that one measure should not be held against us. Lake has done the same thing. There's been very little consolidation. I think they thought there was going to be a breaking of seven, a lot of other areas and consolidations didn't occur.
Well, my discussions with Commissioner Art of Ottawa was, they feel that they haven't been respected by the State of Ohio, Area 7, with everything they do, so they decided to hold, stand hold. They wouldn't accept anybody new, because a couple of counties who had left them in prior years tried to get back in, and they said, we're not taking anybody, we're standing pat, and that's what we're submitting, so...
It didn't leave us with a whole lot of...
Options.
A lot of options. Even looking to the south, it really didn't make sense with Ashland and Richland. I, Richland more than Ashland, because, you know, Mansfield has similar issues that we're facing, our inner cities of Elyria and Lorain, but the patterns just weren't there. Our, our, our commute patterns were, were completely different, and, and so, as we indicate the state, you, you walled us in, you, you in effect have, you left us with no choice but Cuyahoga if we want to collaborate, and we find that a little distressing. Their problems are different than our problems, they have inner-city problems that we don't have. And, and to be honest with you, Commissioner Kayla, their, their workforce system in Cuyahoga is a little bit disarray. Always is functioning very, very well here, it's not in disarray, we're producing a lot of services, but I'm not going to be critical of Cuyahoga, they have a, they have a huge, huge area, and, and so, so joining them, I think, would be even more confusing for us in how to deliver services. I will tell you this, that regardless of what the decision is by the state, workforce development, delivery of services is fundamentally going to change after the next year. Now, you're going to see the next resolution is extending the contract with the current service providers, which the state has allowed for, because next year's supposed to be a planning and transition year. So a lot of the authority that now rests with the Board of Commissioners is going to start shifting, and is going to be more of invested in, in, in a whip board that hasn't been there before. And I'm, I'm, I met with the whip board, we had a discussion about this last week, about the transition, and, and we're going to be doing a lot of work with that whip board during that transition. I don't know where that leaves our employees in the WDA or the Workforce Institute, but we'll now have to try to bid to get that work, and that brings into play some other considerations, but I'm not as concerned with that right now. Once we get an idea of where we're going to be, then I'll start tackling the next issue of, of the transition into, into the new regulations, and how it affect, effectuate that. Hopefully, the state will come back in the next couple of weeks, and we'll have a decision. I really don't want to linger around in this too much. And I, and I did indicate that, when I submitted, I was submitting administratively on behalf of the board, and that a resolution would follow to ensure that the, the, the board generalized what they wanted to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't make a motion on that, did I?
No.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Extend the MOUs with Workforce Investment Board and Ohio Means Jobs Partners for fiscal year 1516, effective July 1st, 2015, through June 30, 2016, for project costs of $325,934.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve an enter in contract with Airmark Correctional Services to provide food service for detention home and residential complex, effective July 1st, 2015, through June 30, 2016. Two bids were received on May 19th, this being the most responsive, complying with specifications, and contains a 60-day cancellation clause with options of four-year renewals.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, authorize lease purchase agreement in the amount of $135,245 with Kansas State Bank, and southeastern equipment for purchases of a K-721F wheel load on state term schedule index STS 515, contract 800185, and will be paid from the NVGT account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize lease purchase agreement in the amount of $153,637 with Altech Capital Services, LLC, for the purchase of Ford F-750 Altech bucket truck on state term schedule contract 77515019081, index STS 515U, and will be paid from the NVGT account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to apply for grant monies through fiscal year 15, Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. This request is based upon a mutual agreement cities of Elyria and Lorain. Ohio Attorney General certified disparate allocation claim, and neither city nor county would receive any money until agreement was approved. Therefore, the allocation of funds will be split as follows. Elyria and Lorain will receive $14,307.33, and the county will receive $14,307.34.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Quite a hefty agenda this week, Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the last five weeks cobbled together, weren't as long as, as, as this one, so it's funny how it really all rains in at one time. I want to modify my request for the executive session to include the potential sale and purchase of real estates. This as an update. Other than that, I yield the counsel, thank you.
Mr. Anus?
I have one matter of pending litigation and one matter of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners report.
Not too much to report. Last Wednesday, we had our land bank meeting, just cleaning up some of our issues there. Yesterday, we had quite a few meetings. We had our annexation hearing, a ditch hearing, and a Transportation Improvement District meeting, so Commissioner Lundey got to have his first annexation and ditch hearing, which, you were pretty calm, and everything went very smoothly.
I heard they all go like that.
Yeah, I don't consider that as first, because there was nobody drooling.
Right.
Yelling. He has to have one by fire before he can pass the test.
We have to open up the divider.
Open up the wall, and, and, and we're dialing the sheriff on the cell phone up here, he'll get one of those yet.
Yeah.
Commissioner, can I get back up to something in your report?
Absolutely, sure.
With regard to the land bank?
Yes.
Can we take an opportunity to talk about OFA funds and the townships for a second? You know, we're preparing some, some letters to go out to the, to the townships, explaining OFA a little better to them. Commissioner Lundey, you wanted a communication piece, which I, I think is absolutely necessary, because there's some confusion out there. And OFA is mainly used in, in the low to moderate income areas and the census tracts, and, and we, we have not been really looking at using the OFA money in the townships, because the qualifications usually, generally are not there. We still have DRETAC money, and we're alerting the townships, and we've been telling them that we, we have the ability to still work in their communities, but they shouldn't think that we're just doing work in Elyria and Lorain. We have to, because of the OFA funds. So it's become priority one to make sure we exhaust every outside revenue stream we can, before we use internal revenue streams. So yes, our priorities have been centered around Elyria and Lorain by necessity of the federal regulations on how OFA monies are used, but we still have the ability and, and the wherewithal to work in the townships with other funding sources, and we'll make sure that gets communicated to them. I thought this was a good opportunity, maybe, you know, to say that, and, and thank you for that.
And we also have...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
We also have the NSP dollars, which we had earlier in our agenda for City of Elyria.
The NSP dollars, do we have any that are still available for township work? I, I didn't think so.
No, but I'm just saying, there's different pools of money.
Oh, yes, okay.
Not that it's for the townships.
Sorry, I was confused.
And I, I believe it's our intent to have a, kind of an update on the land bank with the Township Association.
Yes.
In upcoming meeting.
Good. End of my report.
Well, all the meetings, as Commissioner Kowski said, also Team Lorain County met this morning, our executive board, working on our budget and agenda items for the upcoming meeting on, I think, June 20th.
19th.
19th, thank you, Commissioner. End of my report. I've had the opportunity to attend a meeting that Congresswoman Marcy Capter held in Avon Lake last week, and what a great meeting. It was actually hosted by the Avon Lake Democrats, but it was a bipartisan meeting. A lot of community leaders were there, council members, to hear Congresswoman Capter speak about what is being done and what needs to be done to protect our lake. Had a good update, informative meeting with the Metro Parks. Also, recently had a conversation with the Ohio State Treasurer's Office as we worked through the logistics on the ohiocheckbook.com to improve our county's transparency, and I wanted to say congratulations to my niece Katie, who graduated with the class of 2015 at Avon High School, all 266 folks down there at Cleveland State University.
Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning? Mrs. Beidelman. Morning. Still morning?
Morning, right, Bev Beidelman. Just wanted to, to comment on the, with the Job and Family Services bidding. It was like a bittersweet thing, it was nice to hear that there might be an opportunity for First Transit to bid within a year, and that there's certain guidelines that they can share with everyone to make the field open, and everyone have a understanding of what's involved. And the transit thing is so heavy on my heart, because there's so much needed in Lorain County, and they're still having meetings about it, and if there's any way that we can get matching funds, it would be nice to see it happen. So that is encouraging that maybe in a year that it can happen. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.